We will at this time reconvene the meeting of the Board of Education for St. Mary's County for November twentieth, twenty twenty four, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Bailey, our chair sends her apologies. She is with family at a conference, and a very exciting conference, so all the best to her. I'm going to do something just a little bit different this evening, and I am going to take a few minutes to recognize Mr. Jim Davis. Jim decided not to run for reelection this time around, and so I want to spend just a couple of minutes sharing what the last eight years have been like with Jim on the board. You know, he has an engineering background, and that has certainly come into play a number of times as we have looked at various building projects, the questions that Jim asks, the stories he tells about different things in back in the day have always been enlightening and interesting. And sometimes with Jim, we never know what he's going to say, but it's always good. He has been ready with the story always, especially his travel logs. He and his wife, Lenny, who, thank you, Lenny, for being here this evening. I know you can only be here for a short bit because Jim and Lenny are very active in our community, and she was supposed to be someplace at six o'clock this evening, but we conspired to make a slight change on that. But they have traveled far and wide, and Jim coming back and talking about the history of the places that they've visited and the experiences they have had makes it seem like we all get to travel along with them, which has been great fun over these years. We are, Jim, very grateful for your service. It takes family support to be a board member. This is not an easy job always, and we do it for the love of it, but it always helps when you have a family who is understanding of the time you have to dedicate to the information you have to absorb, the questions you have to ask, and the different things that we need to do, and the opportunity to go to visit schools and see plays and see students inducted into honor societies. We all spend a great deal of time doing that, for the love of it and for the excitement of being able to see the success of all our students. And Jim has been there with us throughout all of that. So we thank you for your service. We have a small token of our appreciation.
Is there money?
No, but you're going to be taking Lenny to dinner. So just many thanks for the time and dedication that you have given to this. I know that you've been truly vested in it, and we very much appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I kind of reflected back in the last eight years. They've been very rewarding for me. I'm part of the family. I've been accepted as that part of the family. And I just wanted to reflect on what I've done. And it's not much of what I've done or what I've accomplished. It's, I'm reminded with the doctors when they take the Hippocratic Oath. They say, "Do no harm." So I can safely say I have not done a harm in the last eight years. I'm not sure what contribution I've made, but I've had a lot of fun. So thank you from the bottom of my heart to all the members and the school family. Thanks so much. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. With that, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented. Consent agenda approved.
No, we're going to do just the agenda first, and then we'll do consent in a bit.
All right.
Okay.
That's good.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Dr. Smith?
As you all said, this is a busy time of year for anybody who has children. There are so many things going on in all of our schools, and we do have the great pleasure of sharing the joy. The All County Honors Middle and High School Orchestra Concert. Mrs. Washington and I were there for that on November thirteenth. What a great evening. What talented performers. In thirty-four years, watching the Orchestra and Strings Program grow in St. Mary's County is really just fantastic, and the accomplishments of these musicians is so evident when you go to a concert. The next evening, we had the All County Honors Middle and High School Band Concert. What a wonderful evening. Once again, these kids gather together. They have such great skill and passion for their work. Last, this week, right? Yesterday? Oh, my gosh, last night. Last night, oh, my gosh, last night was the All County Honors Elementary Chorus Concert, and it was a really special night because the gentleman that you see between Mrs. Washington and myself and Mr. Burrows, Gabriel Gray, this was his first time being a guest conductor, although he is quite accomplished up in Charles County. But he came out, and he was there, and his mother and father joined as well to be part of that celebration. The kids were incredibly involved, and they all had, many had speaking parts, and they had solos. It was a really great evening. Last week, we also had the induction of the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center and National Technical Honor Society induction. Look at all of those faces inducted into and/or continuing with the National Technical Honor Society. Mr. Egan is in the back of the room. Ms. Chu is here as well for other things this evening. But what a great gathering of kids and so prepared for whatever the next stage is in their life. It was a really, that was a really great event. If you had the opportunity to go to Chopsccon High School to go see Romeo and Juliet, November seventh through the ninth, what a great evening. Brandon Marr was the, is the theater director there. Incredible performance, and Shakespeare, not an easy thing to put on a contemporary setting for the play. Really great performances. The Curious Savage last weekend at Leonardtown High School, an incredible performance. There we have Mr. Guy Barbado in the corner with, just down below, Mrs. Washington and Principal Jamie Copsy, and Mrs. Andrews got a selfie in the lobby with Mary Washington. If you aren't going to see the plays that are put on in our elementary, middle, and high schools, you are missing out. You are getting Broadway, off-Broadway, off-Broadway level performances for the mere price of $10 admission fee. A great evening for that because we have one more coming up. So if you weren't able to go to Chopsccon, you didn't get to Leonardtown, don't worry. Great Mills High School this weekend has You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown. It is a fantastic production to see right as we slide into Thanksgiving next week. Spotlight on staff there. Dr. Kelly Hall has devoted decades and decades and decades and decades for decades to many, many decades, the St. Mary's County Public School. And how appropriate that she was recognized by the Maryland Association of Elementary School Principals for, as the 2024 Connected School Leader Award and recognized last weekend, a really fitting testament to somebody who has always been there for students and the people who work with students. So congratulations to Dr. Kelly Hall. And then, super, super special, Green Holly Elementary School. Green Holly Elementary School is being recognized as a National ESEA Distinguished School for exhibiting exceptional student performance and academic growth and closing achievement gaps between student groups. That school is the only school in the entire state of Maryland that is being recognized with that honor. So absolutely awesome, and congratulations. Jen Martin is right over there. Next, Dr. Kelly Hall. This is just the first salvo of really a celebration that's going to continue throughout the entire year. So you're going to be hearing even more about Green Holly Elementary School. Maryland State Department of Education will, of course, be coming down to offer their congratulations. We'll probably be traveling up there as well and then going to the national conference. What a great, great job. So November, here we are. We're getting really close to Thanksgiving next week. Again, the play's coming up this weekend. There's a lot of things going on in St. Mary's County public schools. There's so much to be really, really proud of and make sure that you participate in it because it is a thing of joy. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my joyful colleague, Ms. Hannah Heisler.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So this, well, two weeks ago, no, last week, I completed my ninth school visit, so I'm officially halfway through visiting all of the elementary schools in the county and talking to all the fifth graders. So very exciting. Coming up, I have a visit with Ridge Elementary on December third as the leader of the Superintendent Student Leadership Council. As a student member of the board, we are planning for our next General Assembly in December, where we are hoping to discuss career and finance. We're having a great selection of staff that are going to lead us through a workshop on that. And then we're also going to tackle how to fix the bathroom issues in the high schools, which seems especially fitting because all three high schools, as we talked to in our steering committee meeting on Monday, are all kind of experiencing bathroom issues and vandalism. And so we really want to tackle that at the root and address on the student side what can be fixed with that. So very exciting as far as our December General Assembly. For St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, which I serve as an ex-officio member on the board, on the executive board, as a student member of the board, we're planning for our December General Assembly. The date is still a little bit up in the air because we did have to cancel the first date, but we're thinking about doing later December, and I'm presenting a workshop on public speaking. So that's very exciting. For Maryland Association of Student Councils, we are attending the Fall Leadership Conference, so that is a state conference, this Saturday on the twenty-third, and we have forty-two delegates from our county. So that includes Great Mills High School, Leonardtown High School, Chopsccon High School, Leonardtown Middle, and Margaret Brent Middle. So very exciting, and I'm really looking forward to that and networking with all people around the state. I'm presenting a workshop there as well, so very exciting. My school visit to Hollywood Elementary School was a huge success. I talked about, well, I talked about with the kids, the importance of math and science, and that was really what they said. I said, "Why do you guys like to be here?" And they said, "Math and science," which is super awesome because that is not a typical answer, but it really speaks testament to the teachers. They said they're here to complete their attendance goal, and they get incentives called golden tickets for the three Rs, which I'm sure all of you know. And those golden tickets can buy them things, so they really like to be present and be here because of that. They also have morning news every day, and the fourth and fifth graders get to put that on, and it's actually live and broadcasted to the school on Friday. They're also here for their mascot, which is a bearded dragon named Daredevil.
Oh, yeah.
So very, very exciting. When I asked them why it's important to be engaged, they said to ask questions and to participate in class. And they said it's easy to be engaged because they have the best teachers in the whole county. So shout out to all those teachers. They also said that they love to be engaged in class because they do fun things, like science experiments with chemical reactions, and they especially liked bluet. So always good. They also do something called Character Tea, which is when they have a different character trait each month that they celebrate, and students that participate in that can be invited to the tea party celebration. And so the character trait this month is perseverance. When I asked them what it means to be approachable, they said to be composed and no throwing tantrum because they're in fifth grade. No tantrums. They said being approachable is having a smile on your face. It's inviting others and making new friends. And they are approachable through their community gatherings. And then shout out to a fifth grade teacher. One of the teachers actually has a mailbox in her classroom so kids can anonymously write things that they need to tell her. So that's a super great way for her to be approachable to the kids and for them to feel comfortable talking to them, and the kids really like that. On the top right, you can see me with all the kids. It's kind of a hide-and-seek where you can see me, but a lot of kids. And then when I asked them what it meant to be renewed, they said it's to take time for yourself with a brain break. They said it's to create a safe space, and they are renewed through many celebrations. One of those is International Day, which is something that Hollywood Elementary School has been doing for a couple of years now. It's when, it's super, super amazing, and I'm really excited to attend this year. But I've heard that every grade is a different country, and they learn about the country, and then they teach the other students and peers, as well as some guests, what it means to be from that country, so that's a really cool way for them to learn about the world around them. They also said they love to play trash kickball in class. And coming up, they're looking forward to Christmas, where there's a tradition where Dr. Gilman reads a book, and their principal actually has a snow machine. So pretty exciting.
Pretty exciting.
As well as for Christmas, they have an elf shop where they sell little Christmas gifts, and they make great level ornaments for great level Christmas trees. And shout out to the school lunch. They said that they really love walking tacos and mozzarella sticks.
Yeah, there you go. Very good stuff. Those have been a lot of fun. We really have enjoyed it. Those fifth graders are amazing.
Very good. Next, we have recognitions, and we will start with the Superintendent's Art Gallery for the first marking period for school year twenty-four, twenty-five. Mr. Burrows.
Dr. Smith, if you could join me with your slide, would you?
Oh, yes, I sure shall. Oh, Mr. Burrows, we've pretty much spent almost every night together over the last. We'll be together tomorrow.
Yes, sir. We certainly appreciate your support.
Oh, no, no. It's fantastic.
Well, good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Tonight, we are here to celebrate students whose artwork appeared in the first Superintendent's Art Gallery of the 2024-2025 school year. Each quarter, artwork is selected for the gallery to be displayed here in the Board of Education meeting room and in the hallway leading to Dr. Smith's office. After every quarter, we then gather to celebrate these young artists. As I often say, thank you for your continued support of our programs. Without your support and Dr. Smith's and his cabinet's support, programs like the one we are recognizing tonight would not happen. I'm grateful for your belief in the arts and for understanding that the arts play a vital part in a child's education. Artists joining us tonight, when I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate, and then we ask for you to remain. At the end of the recognitions, there will be opportunities for individual and group photos. Please note, the school listed on the artwork denotes the school in which the artwork was created. So without further ado, let's celebrate our artists. First, from Margaret Brett Middle School with the piece The Goldfish Bowl, Sophia Bonds. And we'd like to thank Sophia's principal, Ms. Edwards, for attending. From Benjamin Bannaker Elementary School with the piece Sunset at Sea, Noah Farmer. And thank you to Noah's principal, Mr. Zerbiak, and our teacher, Ms. Dolish, for attending. From the Chesapeake Public Charter School with the piece The Steep Rocky Mountains, Henry Skrituri. And thank you to the Charter School Education Director, Ms. Embryali, and Henry's art teacher, Ms. Clapp, for attending. And finally, from Ridge Elementary School with an untitled work, Chloe Smith. And thank you to Chloe's art teacher, Mr. McCracken, for attending. Thank you. Congratulations again to all the arts.
So I ask it in every single quarter. Do you want to say anything? No, you don't have prepared remarks? Again, you let your artwork speak for itself. We are definitely celebrating arts in St. Mary's County and its performances, whether you're a part of an orchestra or a band or a choral group or you're involved in athletics or you're expressing yourself through the art. We are made richer by the work that you do, and thank you so much for sharing this. This has been truly the light in this room for the whole fall semester. So thank you very much for everything you've done. So what we'd like to do now is take a little break. We'll take a quick picture. You want to take a picture with these? And then we'll take a quick break so that parents and principals and art teachers can come up and get a picture with these fantastic artists with their artwork. And if we could just give ourselves like maybe five.
Oh, absolutely. Recognizing that I'm sure these guys need to get home for dinner and homework.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sure. Absolutely.
And we don't want to shortchange our Teacher Academy of Maryland or American Education Week. So let us move through this, and we'll take about a five-minute break.
Okay.
So please. We will reconvene at this time, and we will move on to American Education Week. And Dr. Marr just ran out of the room.
To deliver the major awards.
Dr. Marr! Good timing.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It is my honor and privilege to share our appreciation for those who work with our students every day, just as we recognized students just a moment ago, where we have quite a few opportunities to recognize staff this evening. Over a hundred years ago, in nineteen twenty-one, the first American Education Week was celebrated led by efforts by the National Education Association and the American Legion as a way to emphasize the importance of education following World War I. Today, we emphasize that same purpose, showing our sincere gratitude for those who serve in our classrooms and our schools. November eighteenth through twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, is designated as American Education Week. Additionally, today, November twentieth, we also celebrate Educational Support Professionals Day, recognizing the incredible collective efforts of all of our staff. I'll paraphrase John Steinbeck, who wrote, and it's a pretty appropriate quote, given tonight's recognition. "I have come to believe that every teacher is a great artist, or every educator is a great artist. It might even be the greatest of all arts since the medium is the human mind and spirit." For our teachers, leaders, and support staff who figuratively sculpt, paint, and perform with our young people every day, we thank you. Like all artwork, each views with their own eyes and experiences, and our students too will take what you've given them as they grow to view the world through a different lens. You make that impact every day. This evening, as we recognize our incredible educational... This evening, as we recognize our incredible educators across the system, we've invited our system-wide award winners from the 23-24 school year, whose pictures are on display here in the boardroom, to be part of today's recognition. I ask that you please come forward to join me. We have Ms. Kathy Sheehan from Lenartown Middle School, our Washington Post Teacher of the Year. Ms. Lauren Runkles from Great Mills High School, our St. Mary's County Teacher of the Year. Ms. Carmen Santos, who was at Lexington Park last year recognized, and this year at George Washington Carver, the Educational Support Professional of the Year. Ms. Jessica Young, from the Division of Finance and Supporting Services, was also recognized. She's unable to join us this evening. We have Ms. Denise Coyne from Chopticon High School, Leader of Excellence. And our Washington Post Principal of the Year, from Park Hall Elementary, Mr. Jeff Drenzo. In addition, joining us to celebrate our staff are our partners from our Education Association, Ms. Sarah Penrod, the President of ESMIC. And the active president of SMASA, Mr. Jeff Thompson, if you would join us. And Dr. Smith, if you please join us, please. If our guests would like to say a few words, we invite you to do so after Dr. Smith reads the proclamation and shares his remarks.
They'll be thinking about what you want to share. We're not, okay. Whereas, the week of November 18th through the 22nd, 2024, has been designated as American Education Week by the National Education Association, in an effort to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who make a difference and ensure that every child receives a quality education. And whereas, education is a pillar of democracy and a cornerstone of American opportunity that gives our children the foundation they need to understand and appreciate our nation's values of freedom, civility, equality. And whereas, public schools bring together adults and children, teachers and volunteers, businesses, civic leaders, and elected officials, who all have a stake in the public education and play an important role in inspiring children to learn inside and outside of the classroom. And whereas, public schools provide our children with outstanding opportunities in academics, athletics, fine arts, vocational training, and extracurricular activities, to equip them with the skills and knowledge they need to grow, thrive, and succeed in our global society. And whereas, all education employees, including teachers, principals, assistant principals, administrators, counselors, paraeducators, building service workers, cafeteria workers, office personnel, and other support personnel deserve our gratitude, respect, and support for their professionalism and commitment to our schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes November 18th through the 22nd, 2024, as American Education Week, and November 20th, 2024, as Educational Support Professionals' Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and encourages all citizens to join people across the United States in showing support for public education and expressing appreciation to school personnel, celebrating the education that our children receive from public schools. Signed this day, November 202024. Thank you very much for all that you do, every single one of you, in all facets of education. And I do have the mic available, if anybody... Otherwise, we'll just take a picture. All right. Ms. Penrod? All right, there you go.
I am super honored to be here amongst such great educators today, not just as president of the Education Association of St. Mary's County, but as a member and delegate of the Maryland State Education Association and the National Education Association. During American Education Week, we proudly stand in solidarity with teachers, support staff, and families in St. Mary's County and across the nation. As educators, we dedicate ourselves to nurturing young minds, empowering the next generation. But we also recognize the need for stronger support and resources in our classrooms. The future of education depends on fair wages and safe working conditions for all staff, which is, of course, relying on adequate funding. When educators are valued and supported, our students can thrive. This week, let's recommit, as a county, to ensuring that every educator has the tools they need to succeed, and every student has the opportunity to reach their full potential. And I am proud to be in St. Mary's County, because I know that we recommit ourselves to that every single year. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Teacher Academy of Maryland, Dr. Kelly Hall.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're here this evening to talk about the Teacher Academy of Maryland. And I have with me Melissa Chu, who's a Teacher Academy of Maryland instructor, and also Mr. Jamison Combs, who is a Teacher Academy of Maryland instructor. So here's a little bit of the background. The Teacher Academy of Maryland is located at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, with students participating from each high school. It's designed to prepare students for careers in education. It's aligned with the Interstate Teacher Assessment and Support Consortium. It's a rigorous program with college courses that culminates in an internship in a St. Mary's County Public School classroom, under the supervision of a mentor teacher. And our TAM students take the para-pro assessment, which qualifies them immediately to work as a paraeducator, and the pass rate is like 99% on the first try. So here are some information about the early years. In 2014, TAM was... The program was piloted at Lenartown High School and Chopticon High School. In 2016, the program moved to the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. And in 2017, the TAM program graduated the first cohort of seven students. Over half of them went on to become teachers. And this is Melissa Chu. She is a Lenartown High School graduate. She started teaching with St. Mary's County Public Schools in 2001, after teaching a year in Texas and a year in China. She was primarily a history and psychology teacher. In 2014, she started the St. Mary's County Teacher Academy of Maryland program pilot at Lenartown High School. In 2017, she moved to the Tech Center to continue that work. Mrs. Chu's going to tell you a little bit about the course of study. Just to give you an idea of what our students go through, so here in St. Mary's County, we do a two-year program. Students can come in as sophomores and juniors, and they, in that first year, cover human growth and development through adolescence, and then also a Teaching as a Profession course, which just really gives them the background of what colleges, what programs, a little bit of school law, history of education, and those things. In their second year, they are covering a foundations of curriculum instruction class, and they're learning lesson planning, how to write objectives, classroom management strategies. And then we, in St. Mary's County, kind of pair that simultaneously with their internship class as well. So our students just started in October their one-day-a-week internship, and then they're moving towards that four days a week, which they'll be starting in the third marking period. So our classes are capped at 18, and previously, we only had one set of those, and so now we're expanding that too. So TAM was humming along, and we had a growing teacher and staff shortage exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. So in an effort to address those shortages, we thought, what if we expand the TAM program? So this expansion created 72 spaces between TAM 1 and TAM 2, when previously there had been 36. So we effectively doubled it. And our effort was to address the shortages with a grow-your-own component. So here comes TAM teacher 2, Mr. Jamison Combs. Mr. Combs attended St. Mary's College of Maryland, and has a philosophy degree and teacher certification. In 2002, he started as a paraeducator, and that's a very important perspective for him to bring to his role. From 2002 to 2009, he taught at Carver Elementary. 2009 to 2013, at Spring Ridge Middle School as an ELA instructional resource teacher. From 2013 to 2018, he worked at Lenartown Elementary as a 4th and 5th grade teacher. 2018 to 2023, he was a Lenartown Elementary resource teacher. And then in '23, as part of the expansion, Mr. Combs joined us at the James A. Forrest Career and Tech Center as the second teacher in our TAM program. Mr. Combs is going to talk a little bit about our data as a result of our recruiting and marketing efforts.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start by saying what a privilege it is to be a part of this amazing program. I'm excited about its future, and continuing to build upon the work that Ms. Chu and others have done over the past decade to expand its reach. I've been asked to talk about and highlight some of the demographic data within the TAM program regarding the expansion efforts. In our first year of expansion, we essentially doubled the number of participants. We are currently working with 60 TAM students, and are confident that with our ongoing expanded recruitment efforts, we will be able to fill all 72 spaces available. The increases we've seen in diversity are also meaningful. Last year in TAM 1, we had 1 ML student; this year, we have 5. Last year in TAM 1, we had 6 minority students; this year, we have 12. Last year, we had 9 farm students; this year, we have 14. Last year, we had no ELL students; this year, we have 1. As a result of our expansion, we are also serving more students with disabilities. Again, we are extremely excited about the future of the TAM program here in St. Mary's, and are looking forward to the work ahead to make it attractive and accessible to all students.
Thank you. So just to highlight some of the ways we work to expand the program. We have new educator-rising clubs in our middle and high schools. We have new active clubs at Lenartown High, Lenartown Middle, and Chopticon High School. TAM students are teaching career lessons to students in 5th grade across the county. TAM interns are tapping their students into teaching with a little program for elementary school called Teacher Academy Potential Scholars TAPS. 5th graders are encouraged to think about future education careers. Kindergarten and middle school scholars are recognized for their teaching spirit. And we have an annual TAPS night for scholars and families at the James A. Forrest Career and Tech Center. So since the start of TAM, 113 students have completed the TAM program, and 60% are pursuing education degrees. There are some highlights from some of those expansion efforts, the TAPS night, there's the cohort... You can see the cohort's getting bigger in those photos. Now, we thought you really would like to hear from some TAM graduates, who are our current employees. So I have three here tonight that are going to speak to you. So I'm going to call them up, and then when we get them all up here, they're going to tell you about the impact of TAM on themselves. First of all, we have Ms. Emily Snyder. She is a 2020 graduate of Lenartown High School, and then she went on to Salisbury University with a bachelor's degree in elementary ed. She is currently teaching at Captain Walter Franz Duke Elementary. Thank you for being here, Ms. Snyder. A year later, in 2021, Ms. Haley Fuentes graduated from Great Mills High School and the TAM Academy Program. She went to Frostford State University. She started her career as a paraeducator. She is now a special education teacher at Esperanza Middle School. Thank you for being here, Mrs. Fuentes. And then we have Ms. Victoria Edinger. She graduated in May from Great Mills High School. Ms. Edinger is a brand-new pre-kindergarten paraeducator at Park Hall Elementary. Thank you for being here. So we're going to hear from Ms. Snyder, then Ms. Fuentes, then Ms. Edinger.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Emily Snyder. I went through the TAM program my junior and senior year of high school, graduating from Lenartown High School in 2020. I went on to my major in elementary education at Salisbury, and I graduated in three and a half years instead of four with a 4.0, thanks to the TAM program with those credits. So that was huge. I'm now beginning my master's in literacy education, and I am also in my first year teaching 2nd grade at Duke Elementary School. The first year at TAM was literally the best thing that could have ever happened to me in high school. In TAM 1, you learn all of the whys. You dig into a bunch of psychology theories, famous studies, to name a few. Piaget's theory of cognitive development, the whole nature versus nurture debate, Bandera's social learning theory, the list goes on and on. But looking back as a teacher, I don't know what I would have done without any of that background knowledge. If I were to teach just off of my passion, I wouldn't have understood the whys of my behaviors, not the bad behaviors, just why is my student tapping her foot? Why can't my kid write in the lines? Why does this child cry every day during dismissal? This background information was vital to me as the teacher that I am today, and really set me up for success. TAM 2 is when I really began to understand how the classroom worked. I was actually at Duke for my first placement, and then I ended up there as a teacher, which was super cool. And it's more real life, it's classroom management, it's learning curriculums, and conferencing with parents, IEP meetings, building relationships with your mentors and teammates, who gave me recommendations for my future. I can assure you that the responsibility you gain at TAM is absolutely priceless. In college, there's a real separation between the people who have been in a classroom before and the kids who have never stepped foot in a classroom besides their role as a student. And the authentic experience is just amazing. I still utilize so many techniques that I learned from my first-grade placement at Duke, and I just... I can't thank you enough, Ms. Chu, and the program is just absolutely incredible. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Haley Fuentes, and I'm excited to share my TAM journey with you guys. In the spirit of true transparency, I must share with you that I did not want to be a teacher. Being raised by a teacher whose friends are teachers, you kind of want to, you know, steer away from the clique. Long hours, dealing with kids all day, you know? Getting to school early and then staying late. Why would I want to grow up, be an adult, and relive my childhood all over again? I can now say that I am happy I changed my mind. The spring of my sophomore year of high school was a hard one. When Tech Center applications came out, I applied on a whim. My top choices were criminal justice, culinary, and then I guess the Teacher Academy wouldn't hurt. I talked to my mom and her friends who watched me grow up, and my cheer coaches, and they expressed that Teacher Academy needed to be my first choice. So I listened, as good teachers do. Weeks later, I found out I was accepted into the TAM program, and instantly, I was like, oh, boy, what am I getting myself into? I can say that the rest is, in fact, history, as I stand in front of you now, no longer a scared teenager, but a young adult in her first year of teaching. TAM taught me two of the most important things, and I must share them with you all. I was lucky enough to be a part of Mrs. Chu's TAM program during pivotal moments in my life. It's where I learned that, A, you can, in fact, do it. Teaching is the hardest profession. We are teachers, we are caregivers, we're parents, therapists, and all the things at once. Mrs. Chu taught me from the very beginning that I can do it. No matter how hard, how tough, or what situation may be, it is definitely possible, just takes a little bit of grit. And B, you are right where you are supposed to be. Being the only student in my cohort that wanted to teach middle school, I definitely felt out of place sometimes. I mean, who wants to teach hormonal, angry, creepy, best-of-teensagers all day? Ms. Chu, this lady, she never tried to change my mind or tell me that I was nuts. She did nothing but help and support me and ease my mind that I was right there where I was supposed to be in a middle school classroom. I am forever grateful to Mrs. Chu and the TAM program for helping me become the teacher that I am today, and the teacher that I will continue to grow into. Thank you.
And Ms. Edinger.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Edinger. I graduated from Great Mills High School and the Teaching Academy of Maryland in May of 2024. The first year of TAM provided me with a... Well, provided all of us with an opportunity to visit different grade levels, and kind of help our experience of what grades we really wanted to teach. The second year of TAM... The second year of TAM was, we spent regular time in classrooms of grade levels that we wanted to choose. My choice was kindergarten and I loved it. And then it was where I found my love of teaching early elementary. During TAM, we did take the para-pro assessment and the passing score meant we automatically became eligible to become a para. I was excited when I passed because I already knew that I wanted, what I wanted to do. When I applied, I applied and to, and received the position at Park Hall Elementary School as a pre-K para. I would like to tell you something that TAM really helped me do. One of our kids recently was struggling with being able to complete an assignment. To me, it seemed very simple, cut something out and glue it on a piece of paper. Uh, that was a little bit too difficult for the student to understand and I and the student were both getting very frustrated with how could we complete this assignment? It took me a day and we figured it out and I figured out he just needs step-by-step interactions. And I had to focus on what can he do and how can I help him complete it? And with that, we figured it out and we were able to keep going and we completed that activity and many others after that. The TAM program taught me very much, or taught a lot of how to handle different students. I had a student in kindergarten last year who was very difficult and through the interactions with my mentor and we were able to figure out how to keep her going. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we wanted to celebrate, and many of the people are with us tonight, some of those former TAM graduates that work in Saint Mary's County Public Schools. Many of them are here, some were taking graduate courses or had family commitments.
Right.
I'm going to read their name anyway because they're with us in spirit. So we have the following TAM teachers. If you're here, if you please come up. Ashley Berry, um, she is a two thousand and seventeen graduate and she works at Green Holly. Now a national distinguished.
A nationally distinguished ESEA school.
Kate McGee, twenty-seventeen, Chopticon High School. Kylie Duncan, two thousand and eighteen, Leonardtown High School. Arabella Kemp, two thousand and nineteen, Leonardtown Middle School. I'm sorry, Lenny Marshall Den Elementary School. Sarah Bean, twenty-nineteen, Evergreen Elementary School. Jordan Higgs, twenty-nineteen, Greenview Knowles Elementary School. We have a cadre of para educators as well. We have Cameron Levy, two thousand and nineteen, Lenny Marshall Den. Andrew Wathan, twenty-twenty-two, Green Holly Elementary School. Allison Carson, twenty-twenty-two, Lenny Marshall Den Elementary School. And Sydney Roberson, twenty-twenty-two, Esperanza Middle School. Now, none of this would happen for any, nothing really works without the support of an incredible principal who helps make it happen. Mr. Egan, the principal of the James A. Forrest Career and Tech Center. He is a very supportive principal and has been incredibly helpful. And then I'm going to ask TAM teacher one, Mrs. Chu, go on over. TAM teacher two, Mr. Combs. Okay, I say this to you. To all of our TAM graduates, past and present, we are happy that you participated in the program. To our TAM graduates celebrated tonight, we're even happier that you stayed here or came back here and you work in Saint Mary's County Public Schools and are part of our work family. Thank you, Mrs. Chu. Thank you, Mr. Combs. Thank you, Mr. Egan. Congratulations. You might need to bunch up white grapes, too.
There's just so many of them. What are you going to do?
For coming to work here. Very much so. We have, um, no public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
Ms. Penrod, um, I think you know the drill.
You know the drill.
Um, and so shall we just dispense with the public comment statement, um, given that you are well aware of it?
Absolutely. All right. Good evening. My name is Sarah Penrod. I am the president of the Education Association of Saint Mary's County and with me today, I have Mr. Dwayne Hancock, our ESP vice president, and Ms. Katrina Mills, our ESP member-at-large. Today, we want to honor the essential contributions of education support professionals across our schools and communities. On this National ESP Day, we recognize the incredible dedication and hard work that these individuals bring to the education system every day. From para-professionals and building service workers to bus drivers, cafeteria workers, secretaries, and so many more, ESPs are the backbone of our schools. They are the unsung heroes who ensure that classrooms run smoothly, that students are safe, and that teachers have the support they need to focus on what matters most, educating our children. Whether it's providing extra help to students, keeping our schools clean and safe, or offering guidance and care, ESPs create an environment where learning can thrive. Their work goes beyond just tasks. It's about building relationships, providing support, and creating a positive atmosphere in which students can grow. They are often the first faces students see when they arrive at school and they make sure every child feels valued, supported, and ready to learn. On this special day, we thank each and every one of you, our education support professionals, for the critical role you play in shaping the future. Your dedication, compassion, and tireless commitment do not go unnoticed. You make a lasting impact on the lives of students and teachers alike, and we are incredibly grateful for your service. Let's take a moment today to show our appreciation and celebrate the work that you do every day to support our students, our educators, and our communities. Thank you for everything they do, you do, all of our ESPs that were in here. And happy National Education Support Professional Day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the Board of Education approve the consent agenda for approval of amendments of November sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Personnel, teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, reappointment of Saint Mary's County Public Schools Ethics Panel members.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We don't have any action items this evening, but we do have an information item, the completion of the Maryland Leads Grant Program, Dr. Marr, Ms. Lorick, and Mary Pat Smith.
It is so very fitting to have you provide an information update, uh, after that.
Yes.
I understand all of the work that goes on to make sure that we have kids, um, people inspired to become teachers.
You'll see a lot of connections with what you just witnessed to what we're going to be sharing this evening regarding the Maryland Leads update. So, um, a little over two years ago, about two and a half years ago in the spring of twenty-twenty-two, we shared with you that we had applied for grant funding that was released by MSD as part of ESER funds. Um, there were seven areas that you could apply for. We applied for three. We received an amount of just over six-point-eight million dollars. Um, that was to be expended by September thirtieth of this year. Um, and before I go into the, the three areas, I just want to say thank you to everyone who has been involved in making these efforts happen. These were pretty i- intensive and, uh, large items to, to implement and it really took a team effort. And we're represented by three people here, but there are an army of people behind us as well. So from the folks in finance who managed all of the details of this, Subba Manavan, who was our, uh, our point of contact and really worked to make sure every detail was fulfilled. Um, Heather Husk, who you know as our IRT for induction, implementing all of those. And you're going to hear from Sarah and Mary Pat as well, talking about several pieces too. So first of all, thank you to them, as well as all of the Departments of Curriculum Instruction and Supporting Services. Every piece of this had, um, a, a part of the system was involved in it. So we had three big chunks that we're going to focus in on, three pillars, if you will, of the Maryland Leads program. First was Grow Your Own, and you heard the emphasis and the importance of the Grow Your Own program that included supports for our teachers as they came into the, into the profession, but also building out those programs for our future educators as well. Staff support and retention, because we know that once they're here, we want them successful and staying in the profession. And then addressing all of the issues related to science of reading and making sure our students have the best literacy instruction throughout their growing years. So we'll start with, uh, just an overview of where we were with, um, with Grow Your Own program. So first of all, we, over the, as, over the last ten years, as we've seen the number of teachers graduating from teacher education programs decline, we also had an increase in those who needed, um, uh, conditional certifications or a certification pathway once they joined us. And so we worked with a number of our partners. Two particular partners were part of the Maryland Leads program, Notre Dame of Maryland and the University of Maryland Global Campus, who are directly tied with programs to help our staff become fully certified within their first few years. Uh, we saw seventy-nine percent of our first-year conditionally certified teachers who are ready to complete within this, this next year. Um, eighty-eight percent of those first-year conditionally certified teachers, um, participate in our, our induction program seminars and find those are helpful and useful to them as they grow in their profession. And, uh, we see eighty-five percent of them receiving an, uh, an effective rate or higher on their first round of observations, too. These are, these are incredible, um, statistics that show that they are not only, um, getting their feet planted in our system, but also becoming succe- successful and, and working through that, um, their program. So we have a number of supports that have been set up from tuition reimbursement, direct billing. There were scholarships available, additional mentoring and differentiated supports as well. If we look at, um, additional programs, we found that we wanted to find additional ways to support our students. So one of those was to, uh, help some of our currently certified teachers receive that additional endorsement as ESOL certified teachers to support our growing number of multilingual students. And we've seen, uh, seventeen participating, seventeen teachers participate in that. And then we also looked at the, the support pathway to become a teacher. We held initial focus groups that helped our, um, our, our para educators who wanted to become teachers find that pathway. And we have a number of them, some of whom we saw here in the room today, who have become teachers. And a couple others who have become apprentices. And, uh, we're very proud of the apprentice program. I'm turning it over to Sarah to talk a little bit about that.
We brought the apprentice program to you, um, in a presentation earlier in the year, so we're not going to go into a lot of detail. Um, but what I really wanted to, to jump into was the idea that these, uh, teacher apprentices are working directly in the classroom, supporting teachers, and gaining firsthand experiences in what it looks like to become a future teacher. Um, this year specifically, um, in this last twenty-three, twenty-four cycle, we had students, the apprentices who are working towards field experiences. So as their college was requiring them to have certain hours in the classroom, we were able to provide that during the school day. No taking of leave, no adjusting anything, being able to fully parallel that with their coursework. Um, and that's a really big piece that has come into play as we continue to set forth on this teacher apprentice program for future endeavors. Uh, we really want to start looking at those teacher apprentices, while they are part-time college students, they are full-time in their craft. And we want to recognize that and continue to find creative ways to support them in that endeavor. Um, we also, uh, really highlighted that in the first iteration of the teacher apprentice program, the apprentices supported roughly three hundred teachers. That is a lot of teachers. And they found ways to connect with them and the students in those classrooms. Um, in this new iteration, as we start to look at the, uh, apprentice through the lens of, uh, a registered apprenticeship, which is our next sort of iteration of where this program is going, um, they are now working fully with veteran teachers for fifty percent of their day. So they're getting that in-person connection with the, uh, master teacher and that's offering them additional experiences in the classroom. One of the last pieces I'd like to highlight specifically about this program is that the demographics of our teacher apprentices are more closely aligned with our current student population and SMCEPS community in general. Um, and so that's one of the areas that we really wanted to highlight in our Maryland Leads Grant. Um, and I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, uh, in the, in the teacher apprentice program, one of the biggest assets to supporting our teacher apprentices was having Kim Knight on staff as the, uh, professional development support for those teacher apprentices. And she was a really great connection for them in, uh, the classroom as well as in outside professional development opportunities. Um, schools that had a, uh, teacher apprentice saw them as a, oops, thank you, saw them as a ponch- positive contribution. Um, eighty-seven percent of admin found them to be a help in the classroom and the school community. Um, when we asked for feedback quarterly from the supporting teachers, from the apprentices, from the admin themselves, um, everybody just kept asking, how can we have more apprentices? And we have you to thank for that, because supporting that program continuously throughout this, um, has been, um, a really wonderful gift. Our apprentices are grateful, but we are grateful too that they have your support as they become those future teachers in the classrooms.
And I want to go back to, just as another, uh, point here, too. These are teachers who are growing and becoming teachers within our schools. So we have had a number of them who have already, they have, uh, responsibilities as, as teachers themselves now. Um, and that is really paying off in dividends to grow our own with this program. And as a registered apprentice program, too, we're building this out as a, as a, as part of a, a larger coalition, if you will, across Southern Maryland. In the spring, we held a summit around, uh, the, addressing the teacher pipeline. You can see the number of, of organizations, including, um, not only our partner school systems, but our education associations, MSD and the Department of Labor, and our partner universities to look at new ways that we can support future teachers and a pathway for future teachers. We talked a little bit about TAM earlier and that is, that is a, a tremendous program that helps build these future teachers. And we heard the great benefits and personal stories of that. And how do we take that to another level where they can directly tie to the College of Southern Maryland and directly into a program here in Southern Maryland? That is a gap that we're trying to address. And, um, we're going to share this with you too, but we, we, that work of a pipeline is ongoing. Uh, we have a number of work groups that are, that are continuing to look at how we find these solutions. We actually just shared information, um, up the road at, uh, the, the MSD with the Professional Standards for Teacher Education Board about the work that we're doing here so that we can build out these future teachers. Because there is still much work to do, but this program, the Maryland Leads program, has gr- really given us some, um, seeds to help those trees grow.
And in addition to that, one of the pieces we offered up were scholarships and directly to, uh, uh, students who were pursuing an education degree that would be certified in the state of Maryland. Um, we worked through BECA, which we, uh, had a really lovely discussion about just, uh, a couple of board of ed meetings ago. And it was a really nice connection to work with them. Um, over the, uh, two-year cycle, we had an opportunity to send out, um, twenty unique students receiving scholarships. Several renewed for a second, uh, a second opportunity as well. And, um, in addition to the scholarships handed out to BECA, we also sent, uh, opportunities to some of our local college partners. And a s- a few students took, uh, took that application and, um, uh, received a college scholarship. So they were in their final two years of their degree. And so two of them are excited to be coming back to us. And I'd just like to read one quote that I really think sums it up when we asked for them to share some feedback about how they felt in the classroom experiences that they're receiving at their college, as well as the financial. And, um, this is one of our, actually one of our former TAM students. She said, "In receiving this scholarship, it has been very motivating knowing that Saint Mary's County Public Schools believes in me and supports me on my journey toward becoming a teacher. It encourages me to be my best so I, that I can be for my future students. It has relieved a financial burden, allowing me to focus on my school and experience." It has relieved a financial burden, allowing me to focus on my school and experiences rather than finding a second job. I'm very thankful to receive this."
That's fantastic. And as part of that scholarship too, they commit to coming back to teach with us as well. So, um, once they, they, they develop those skills and they come back to teach, we want them to stay with us. And so we know there's a number of supports that we are able to then provide. And I mentioned the work of our induction program. What this funding allowed us to do was really build out more differentiated pathways. As we have seen, the, the, the change in not only the, the teachers who are coming, but the needs of our students, how do we support them? And so not only for our conditionally certified teachers, but those who come from traditional pathways, and our veterans who join us from elsewhere, they all come with different needs. And Ms. Husk does a wonderful job in differentiating the supports and professional development and how we provide that access from our teacher apprentices. Ms. Lurk talked about the fact that the apprentices support teachers, because part of what they're doing is not only getting experience for themselves, but going into a new teacher's classroom to give them that extra set of hands. And that has been tremendously helpful. We provided every new teacher with a kit of instructional materials as they began the year. It's a box of things that you just don't realize you need until you get in the classroom, from a stapler and post-its and all kinds of things that you might need, dry erase markers, et cetera. Those are things that we just, the, the grant funding allowed us to give those teachers that, that, that kit of supplies that they won't have to buy themselves when they start their career. The mentoring and coaching, and, and we have some differentiated supports for that too. And, and Ms. Lurk will talk a little bit about specifically the science supports.
Yes, and over the last two years, Mr. Bill Snively, a former S M C P S teacher, came in to coach our middle school and high school science teachers. It was a really great resource that we were very, very blessed to have, spending hours with them. And we were able to find a little bit of Title II funding to continue that on. And so Ms. Zimmerman, over at Supervisor of Science, was really, really grateful for that. Another quote from, from student, from teachers working with him is that, "Mr. Snively helped with great ideas, bringing them into my classroom, but more importantly, gave me insight on how I was managing the class as a science teacher." And so having that real world experience with somebody who understood the content and understood the clientele in front of them, I think was really beneficial.
And these supports matter. Building relationships with new teachers matter. Helping them see the connection they have within the community, community matters. Dr. Smith has shared the number of times where, in his reports, about going to visit and just talking with them and asking them how it's going. All of these efforts pay off with retention. And we see over a ninety percent retention of our new and non-tenure teachers and a ninety percent retention overall. That is not a, a normal number across the state or the nation, and it's because of these kind of efforts. And so, once they're here, again, another thing that we built out is the teachers who are with us. Several, actually, a couple of the teachers recognized this evening were part of the teacher leadership cohort. In fact, we had a session right before we came here with our cohort for this year too, in that the teachers who are working with their peers, we need them to have the skills and we support them as they grow as leaders, supporting their colleagues as well.
And we wanted to recognize and elevate them as teachers in the classroom and not always feeling like you need to take a different path. That the, the leadership can be distributed amongst a school community and offering those opportunities. And so thus this teacher leadership cohort, T L C, was born. Our first year, we had twenty-five student, twenty-five teachers complete the year one. So many, so much success in that, that we actually piloted a year two cohort this year. So we're running another full fifteen in year one and another seven that continued on from year one to year two. Each of them had a project that they worked with their admin to identify. It was focused on the school improvement plan, and they sort of followed that project throughout the year. And it was really lovely to see them at the end, being very reflective and finding great success and connecting one in just another way as a leader. The other piece that is quite significant, as we discussed, the blueprint for Maryland's future, is national boards. And as you can see, they're in twenty-twenty-one, we had a self-reported tracking of one candidate who fully submitted. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had forty candidates fully submit and about fifty-nine who continued on in the process. And national board was supported here at S M C P S prior, but Maryland Leads offered us a spring board to really dig in and understand what was needed to support those candidates. We offered a, a financial waiver through Maryland Leads to fully remove the financial burden of the course, because it is time-consuming and rigorous. And we also worked to establish a central office team to make sure that we were identifying candidates and being able to track them and support them in the manner with which they needed in those moments. National board is a very rigorous process, but it is very independent. And so there are only so many things we can do when we don't know. And so because a lot of it was self-reporting, we were unsure in the very beginning. As we've continued to go through this process, we're, we're finding more ways to connect with candidates and get them to understand, to come to the table with that, that immense amount of vulnerability that it takes to reflect on your teaching practices and national boards.
Another element of the staff support and retention was helping to support all staff across the system. Not necessarily in a program that they're working on or a professional development program, but also helping them to have some of their other needs met. So one of them, for example, was providing every staff member with an iPad, giving them an actual technology resource. This was funded completely by the Maryland Leads Program, but also gave a resource that every staff member can carry around. It helps with a number of things, from a classroom teacher using it instructionally to a support professional using it as they work in their, their roles throughout the building. The second thing was, and you've heard a number of reports about Everside, and the, the staff health support that is here as, for our staff, as well as the county staff. And that was supported, it's kickstart elements by Maryland Leads as well.
And as we jump back into the impact of, of S S R specifically, there's just two pieces that we wanted to highlight. I know that Dr. Mar already talked about the classroom materials. I just want to talk a little bit more about national boards, because it is such a bigger piece. And because of the, the opportunities shared through the financial supports of Maryland Leads, we were able to identify current national board teachers who could help expand the support process. And so we went from a few teachers on the side helping out to over two-hundred-and-fifteen hours of support. And this year, even though it's not funded by the Maryland Leads Grant, it was, it was established through this growth. And that is, we have a hundred and sixty-five, give or take five, that are participating in candidate support of some sort. And a hundred and sixteen of them are in a three-credit course that was established to offer them continuous opportunity to connect with people during their support candidacy.
All right, so that's the first two pillars, and we're going to turn it over to Mary Pat to share about.
Thank you. I'm going to share with you our Science of Reading component and some of the things that we focused on with that. There was three main pieces that we really looked at within the Science of Reading. It was training for our teachers, high-quality instructional materials. And then we layered in a component for Benchmark Advance when we adopted the new K through five E L A series. Maryland Leads really helped us get a, a massive jump towards some of these things. And it's very exciting that we were using Maryland Leads this way, because since then, we had several things that have come, such as Science of Reading training now being required for teacher licensure. And then instructional practices and materials are required within this new K through five literacy policy from M S D E that are aligned to the Science of Reading and high-quality instructional materials. So we already have a huge advantage for these two requirements that are coming. For our Science of Reading training, one of the main trainings that we focused on was using letters, which is really focusing on K through three teachers, but we offered it for all of our staff who support reading in the elementary schools. We also had several other staff, secondary teachers. We had administrators, instructional resource teachers, ESOL teachers, all participate in our letters training. At the end, when we finished everything, we had a total of four-hundred-and-fifty-nine staff members that were trained. And when we did our last reporting, we were able to say that we had ninety percent of our K through five staff who support reading instruction trained in letters and the Science of Reading. So that is a very huge accomplishment for us. And through this, we were also able to provide stipends to our teachers who participated in the letters training to kind of compensate them for their time, because letters is really hefty. It's two components, letters one through four is ninety hours of work, and letters five through eight is ninety hours of work. So teachers who completed the whole cycle, it's a hundred and eighty hours that they're taking away from their families and doing in their own time. So we were able to use Maryland Leads to kind of compensate them and really show them that we appreciate them investing their time in this, because we know that programs don't teach kids, teachers teach kids. And the only way we get kids to move is by having really highly qualified teachers. The second piece that we looked at was high-quality instructional materials. We really focused on this so that we could make sure that all teachers who are providing instruction to students have access to high-quality instructional materials that align not only to the curricular programs that we use, but also align to best practices for the Science of Reading. So some of those components were utilizing Wilson foundations, providing more decodable text, and utilizing phonics for reading, which we were able to purchase from curriculum associates through our Maryland Leads money. The reason we really wanted to focus on letters and high-quality instructional materials ultimately is to impact student data. That's really why we do this, is to make sure kids are achieving. And we saw some significant gains in our data as we were going through. If you look at some of our baseline data, within just looking at DIBELS, we were able to drop our percentage of K through three students who are scoring intensive from a baseline we're in the forty, forty-three percent down to. Oh, my gosh.
Twenty point nine.
Thank you, twenty point nine. I made it a darker color font, so. And then really, when we even get down into K M one specifically with those indicators, we're down to like sixteen percent of our kids scoring intensive. That is a massive drop for us, looking at our baseline data. And it really shows that the training that teachers receive on what instructional best practices are for kids with foundational skills instruction is being applied, and our students are, are making gains from it, so. You can also see across our K through five DIBELS data, so it's not just our students in K through three, it's also our students in fourth and fifth grade that we're seeing that percentage of core increasing as we go. We were stagnant in our DIBELS data for a very long time, and we're really seeing some significant gains. We're excited about that. It's showing that our kids in the primary grades are holding on to those skills and they're carrying them with them as they move into the intermediate grades. The last piece that we addressed within Science of Reading was really looking to support the implementation of Benchmark Advance, which we adopted as our E L A curriculum. We really wanted to focus on this because it was connected reading and writing. That was focused on building student knowledge and vocabulary. We really had already focused a lot on foundational skills. We wanted to focus on the other aspect of the reading rope and the language comprehension, making sure that students had foundational skills, but also had strong background knowledge, vocabulary, and were able to really use metacognitive strategies to develop their thinking and be able to access text. One of the key things about this was that, for the first time in a long time, we had consistent writing instruction that followed a scope and sequence from K to five that was systematic, was rigorous, and was connected to what kids were reading. It was not a disconnected instructional time. So we used our Maryland Leads money to be able to provide professional learning to all of our teachers. We really focused on initial implementation, obviously, the first year. Looking at Benchmark Advance, just the writing component, that's the focus for year two right now, really digging into the writing piece and then utilizing the online component of Benchmark Universe. Through our Maryland Leads money, we were able to partner with Benchmark and provide trainers to every building that came in and modeled lessons to every grade level, K through five. And teachers were given the time to go over the lesson with the trainer, watch the model, and then have a debrief time to really discuss, how do you take this? How do you implement it in the classroom and how do you leverage it for student achievement? And then on top of that, we were able to provide a one-on-one coaching cycle to every third, fourth, and fifth grade teacher. So the trainer was able to come in, partner with the teacher. They either co-taught or the trainer provided feedback, and they were able to debrief on that, to really focus on best instruction. Because of this, we've seen some gains. This is just from our first year, we looked at our M cap data for writing specifically. And being able to see from school year twenty-two, twenty-three to school year twenty-three, twenty-four, we're starting to see some gains in the area of writing conventions and then also into written expression. So we're hopeful that as we have this consistent scope and sequence that's really rigorous for our writing instruction, we'll continue to watch that grow, so. All right, I'm going to also share this for Ms. Bachner, hopefully I do it justice. The next component with Science of Reading was reading apprenticeship. And with reading apprenticeship, they were able to have their two cohorts of teachers who went through reading apprenticeship in the secondary schools. And then they had a coaching component that also happened. So any of the teachers in the cohorts for one and two then got to participate in the coaching with trained staff. And really, reading, she wanted me to stress, reading apprenticeship was chosen because it really does align with what is best practice for instruction, regardless of the content area. So it's those pieces that all teachers can apply to reading, no matter what content they're teaching. And then for reading apprenticeship, they had a hundred and twenty secondary staff that were able to be trained, and a hundred percent of their participants submitted their self-reflections. It was a pretty rigorous form and thing they had to submit for their self-reflection of the impact that it had in the classroom. So for us, for Science of Reading, for the sustaining piece, what we're working on next is continuing to offer letters training to staff as funding permits. We're hoping for another grant so that we can really do a little bit more. We're going to continue working on implementation of our high-quality instructional materials, focusing on writing within Benchmark Advance. We're continuing our focus on foundational skills instruction and instructional best practices aligned to the Science of Reading. I don't think that'll ever shift, we'll always be doing that. And then for reading apprenticeship, they're starting a reading apprenticeship leadership cohort of all the staff who are trained. They're starting a leadership cohort to be in the buildings, supporting new teachers and being able to make sure that these strategies continue within instruction, so.
And for staff support and retention, we're obviously going to continue to keep upkeep with the iPads and training for all staff. Our, our big focus for national boards is to continue to work on streamlining candidacy, reporting, and offering varied methods of component support as we get to know the program more. Those are our two big highlights.
And for Grow Your Own, you've heard of what's going on with TAM, and our apprentice program just continues to grow. We have ongoing work to try to expand that so that those apprentices gain credits on the job to earn towards licensure. And then, of course, the continued work of supporting our teachers through a differentiated induction program. So we're, we're very excited that we were able to use this funding that came at a time when we all were facing a lot of challenges and turn it into some sustainable programs that will impact our students and teachers moving forward. So thank you all for your support, and of course, if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Yeah, so I don't have any questions, but I would just like to thank you all for all of your hard work. And as a student, I can really see the impacts of all of this work, especially in the elementary level. It's really impactful to see, you know, these fifth graders and they're really, you know, with the program as far as reading and writing. And so that's really awesome, that we were able to see these drastic gains, which is super awesome. As far as the Teacher Academy of Maryland, I personally know four people that are in the Teacher Academy, and they love it. So I think it's just a great program, and I appreciate all of your work for that. Everside Health Center has been a, a. Everside Health Center has been an amazing addition. I've actually gone myself three or four times, because my mom's a teacher in the system. And so, you know, I can speak to the quality of the professionals there, and it's very easy to use, so I really appreciate that. And then, also, the teacher cohort, the teacher leader cohort, my mom's in it. And so, I saw her meeting today. She's doing a program on rising EP students and giving them support. And so, I can really just see the impacts within my school, so thank you.
Tim?
Uh, no questions, other than thanks again for the work you're doing. And as we all know, we got to get our, our reading scores up, our math scores up. And this is a, a good springboard for accomplishing those goals.
Dorothy?
I don't know if you could answer this, but would you say, looking today, and you know how COVID had kind of disrupted students' lives, would you say that reading has improved? Can you like look at data and just, what do you, you know, your observation? I don't need data.
Yes, I can say, based off of our data alone, we can say it's improved dramatically. But also, just looking from observations of teachers and being able to be in buildings, looking at the quality of instruction that students are receiving. Our, our teachers are dedicated to making sure that kids get the best instruction possible, and you can see it in their work every day when we're in there, really making sure that what they're doing aligns to what the science and the research shows.
Good, good, thank you.
You know, over the years, the teacher induction program, the, the work that you've done to provide professional de-, professional development has really improved and matured over time. The number of teachers who have come into our system, who have been teachers elsewhere, that have talked with me and spoken about the incredible resources that are available here and that the supports that are available is striking in how different it is and how much better it is than the places that they've left. And they've left a lot of different places for a lot of different reasons. But I think we have watched that program over the years improve and improve and improve, as you have sort of teased out what's working, what needs, you know, what could you change? And so, it's not enough just to bring people in. It is letting them know that they are absolutely supported and valued in so many different ways. And I think that's a significant part of what sets St. Mary's County Public Schools apart from so many others. And thank you, because I know that it is due in large part to a great many people. But Dr. Marr, your work in really spearheading this has been exemplary and, and very much appreciated, because we can see the fruits of your labors. So, thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that you said that there, there are so many people. Ms. Husk's leadership is, is incredible, as is the partnership that we have with Human Resources and all the content supervisors and program supervisors who provide that professional development. Because we truly, as a system, we believe that we need to support them in every step along the way. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Mary?
Thank you. I want to thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you have done and everybody who works with you to bring this forward to the board, not only to enlighten us, but to enlighten the public as well, as what we are doing to grow our own training for teachers and the Science of Reading. That's a new initiative by the state superintendent that she has from the state she came from. She improved the scores of reading through the plans there and to bring that to the state of Maryland. I want to congratulate SMCPS for being approved as Maryland's first registered apprenticeship program through the Department of Labor. That is a major accomplishment. So, we want to not only recruit teachers, we want to retain teachers, so that they will stay. Also, to grow our own. I remember when the program first started, and we have made tremendous strides with our students who want to come back and work in the county, and that's what we want. So, it's so much good that is happening in our school system. Thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thanks to all our students who have been encouraged from elementary school on up to middle and high school to go in the education profession. And it's, it's paying dividends. They know the county, they know the students, they, they know. They feel comfortable here, they went through the system, and they know how the system has benefited them, and they want to be a benefit to other students as well. So, the work is tremendous, and I applaud the superintendent for meeting with all the new teachers on a regular basis. You know, how many superintendents do that? I mean, he meets with them on a regular basis. How you doing? He asks them questions. He wanted them to be honest and transparent. What can we do better? What could, what are we doing? Is, is it helping? Is it not helping? What do we need to do? So, I applaud him for doing that, taking that approach with our new teachers. And they are impressed by that, like superintendent is coming to meet with us like this? He knows me by name? So, I want to thank him for what he does. And he's a humble person, so he doesn't like being congratulated. But I thank everybody in the school system. We are a wonderful school system, and I am just proud of the work that's going on here. And I am honored and humbled to be able to work four more years with the school system, because I see the tremendous work that is being done in all areas of education. And thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Smith, I'm going to let you wrap up.
Just a, just a last is that we had a, education has had a crisis of inspiration. People look and find faults, they find cracks, and they criticize without offering how, how to make things better. You absolutely always ask, how can I make things better? How can we leave the, this world a little bit better than we found it? A classroom, a, a student, a, a piece of, you know, something. You are inspiring, and the work that you're doing is inspiring. And when you see the teachers who come back to the system, perhaps who didn't necessarily, like Ms. Fuentes, who was like, I'm not going to do that. And yet, somehow, through her interactions with, with other committed adults in St. Mary's County, comes to the understanding that this is, I am in the right place. This is where I'm supposed to be. This is what I'm supposed to be doing. There is nothing more satisfying than making a difference in the life of someone else, and certainly, in the lives of children. So, it, it's been incredible work. For six million dollars, a lot of money, a lot of money. But we have touched thousands of lives, and I guarantee we'll touch hundreds of thousands more when you think about all of the, all of the impacts that the people who've been through the program are going to have. And the last for the Science of Reading. We were doing Science of Reading way before anybody came down and said, oh, Science of Reading. We were already there, we already had an approved Leads grant, we're already moving forward. We've always, we've always understood that, you know, this is absolutely positively the way that we teach kids how to learn. We're committed to it. You found a way to put money and, and rev it, and that's, that's fantastic. And for any parent, watch this and understand all of the expertise that's happening in the classroom. And if you want your child to be a good reader, here's a simple fact. Take this, throw it away, and tell them to read a book. And if you aren't watching your child read a book every night, do not complain about this school system. We become great readers by reading great things. And the only way you can read great things is if you actually put that device aside. And don't say there's books on it. I read it on my books. No, you don't.
There's something different about holding a book.
Read a book. And that's just not coming as an English teacher, because I think that English teachers are most important. We're all, we're all, we're all, we're all teachers of reading. I mean, it really is. It's, it's inspirational work, and it's exceptionally complex work. And it can be very frustrating and daunting work. And you do not, none of you let your frustration show. You are undauntable, you are unflappable, and I thank you for it. You inspire me every single day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, our next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, December fourth, 2024, with executive session at eight AM and the open meeting beginning at nine AM. And for anyone who really wants to be an early riser and meet us here at seven-thirty in the morning, we believe, we hope, that the certificates will be in. And Ms. Debbie Birch, the clerk of the court, will be coming to swear in Josh Guy, Mrs. Washington, and myself. And we look forward to it very much. With that, we are adjourned.